I will introduce myself. My name is Attorney Joseph McRitchie, representing Mr. Paul Shinet, who's the trustee of P and D Realty Trust, and he owns property located in 202 through 208 Washington Street in Quincy. And this is an appeal of the inability to get zoning enforcement under the provisions of Chapter 48, Section 7. We did write a letter to the building, the Director of Inspeccional Services, pointing out seven specific instances where we felt that the zoning was being violated in the abiding property. It's located at 210 through 216 Washington Street, which is owned by Debona Realty LLC, of which Mr. Mark Debona is the registered agent. And to give a little bit of background, the property is located on the property is Cagnes Restaurant, right down here in the Quincy Point area, just outside the square. MDB Inc. does business as Cagnes, and Mark Debona is the sole officer and director of the corporation. Also on the property, since this appeal was filed, there's been a new license issued for a new bar and a new restaurant to be called The Poor Yard, owned by RAC 208 Inc., of which Mr. Debona is also the sole officer and director of that corporation. And it's also, it's a mixed-use property, and they're a residential apartment upstairs on the second floor. The real property, the real estate lot on which the property sits was established in 2012 with the filing of a, under the subdivision control law, a plan indicating that subdivision control law does not apply. That's commonly referred to as an approval-not-required or an A and R plan or Reform 1 plan was filed in the Registry of Deeds. And Mr. Debona bought the front properties if they were carved off from a larger parcel of land that goes down Raven Street and is occupied by, I'll call them the Republic at least. I believe it's Republic Plumbing Supply. They've got a warehouse, they've got a parking lot. Originally, this was part of a larger parcel that exceeded 14,000 square feet. The part that was carved off with the A and R plan is slightly over 6,000 feet. And on the plan itself identifies two lots, but they're held in common ownership. Both lots are less than the minimum size required under the zoning. But under the theory of merger, since they're held in common ownership, they are merged as a matter of law. And it is a lot that does exceed the 5,000 minimum-sized lot that's required. But the note that I would like the board to take note of is on the plan itself that was submitted to the planning board. And it has the approval-not-required plan, the approval-not-required language that's required on the plan. But it also notes that there's restrictive endorsements on the plan above the planning director's signature. And the three restrictive endorsements read as follows. Lots are created for convincing purposes only. That's note number one. Note number two, no determination of wetlands has been made or intended by planning board endorsement. And the most interesting one is note number three, no determined as to compliance with zoning ordinance requirements has been made or intended by planning board endorsement. In 35 years of practicing law and looking at lots of A and R plans, I've never seen one that says right on the face, "We're not saying this complies with the zoning ordinance." And I think it's obvious why. From my perspective, it doesn't comply with the zoning ordinance. So I wrote a letter to the, oh, and I do want to back up just a little bit. The date of that plan is December 2011. It was recorded in the Registry of Deeds, or not the Registry of Deeds, it was located, it was recorded in the Land Court Department of Norfolk County, which is registered land, early in January 2012. That's important because the City of Quincy zoning ordinance that's currently used was adopted in June, June 22, 2011. So when these lots, this lot was created, it was subject to the current zoning ordinance that's in effect. So, you know, you may hear during the presentation by counsel for Mr. Debona, you may hear, and Mr. Duca may even talk about pre-existing non-conforming and so forth. The lot was created after the adoption of the current zoning ordinance. And I think that's very, very important in this case. Now, again, I did write a letter to Mr. Duca, and I was requesting that there be zoning enforcement. And I did note seven specific violations of the zoning ordinance. And my original letter is attached and appended to and incorporated into the appeal that's before the board. And I just want to go through them very quickly. The current zoning ordinance for Business B, and this is a Business B zone. It's a mixed-use building, and it includes apartments. And the minimum lot size for residential uses in a Business B zone is 14,000 square feet. This is a 6,000-square-foot lot. Prior to the approval-not-required plan and the conveyance from the prior owner, this was part of a lot that exceeded 14,000 square feet. So it was a legal-sized lot that owned, that in a Business B that had residential uses. It's been conveyed off, 6,000-foot lot, an undersized lot. There's never been any application made to this board. It was conveyed at the time, the minimum lot size is 14,000 square feet. It didn't comply when it was conveyed out. Mr. Debona took ownership of it, or the Debona Realty LLC Limited Liability Corporation took ownership of it. And it's an undersized lot. And I've cited the section, you know, and that's the first violation that I cited in my letter. Cagnes, as it's currently operated, the second note that I, the second issue that I raised, fails to meet the definition of restaurant local that's contained within the zoning ordinance. And I quoted the language, and it's on, it's under the number two in my discussion or my letter to Mr. Duca. And the definition of restaurant local is eating places of 5,000 square feet or less of gross glory area per establishment, primarily serving local needs, but not limited to lunchroom, restaurant, cafeteria, place of sale, consumption of beverages, ice cream, et cetera. Important phrase. Primarily in enclosed structures, with no dances or entertainment other than music and no drive-in or retail or drive-through window service. And I've added the emphasis and underlined primarily in enclosed structures because the operation of Cagnes, at the time this application was filed, included a 100, or 98-seat restaurant indoors and an outside patio. And that's what this appeal is really about, is the outside patio. It was built last fall. It was called The Courtyard at Cagnes. Since this appeal's been filed, they're changing the name. They're reconfiguring things. But it's a outdoor patio with 50 seats. Now, I'm not sure that a primary, primarily indoor seating, you know, one-third of the seats are outside and two-thirds of the seats are inside. I'm not sure that meets the definition of primary. But I think that argument goes out the window with the new restaurant that has since been approved by the licensing board, 23 seats inside and 50 seats outside. So we have two-thirds of the seating is outside. This is not primarily indoor dining. So it doesn't even meet the definition of a restaurant local as that term is defined by the zoning ordinance.
Mr. McCruchy, you just could have lost me there. I'm sorry. For me to interrupt you, that is, I did.
Please ask the question. I'd be glad to.
From what you said, just said, it sounds to me that Cagnes is operating primarily in enclosed structures.
Well, I don't know whether a third of the seats outside on the patio is primarily.
I was expecting long.
That's a good argument. That's a point. That's an issue that certainly can be debated. But with the new restaurant, 23 seats inside and 50 seats outside, the ratio has been flipped. Instead of one-third, it's now two-thirds of the seating is outside.
So you would have a separate, they're separating two restaurants, that way you're trying?
There's been a second restaurant licensed on the other side. We'll get to that too. But the second restaurant called The Poor House, Poor Yard, 23 seats. What was operated there prior to that was called The Quincy Cafe, a breakfast, coffee shop-type place licensed by the licensing board, common vigilance license, seating of four, four people. Now it's been expanded to 23 people with 50 seats outside. So a licensed premise of four has now been expanded to 73. I think that's a substantial expansion of a non-conforming use, at the very least, that has to come before this board. Substantial increase of the non-conforming use. We didn't even get to the part about the no setbacks and so forth yet. But if I'm wrong on every argument I make, at the very least, this is a non-conforming structure. And they're increasing the non-conformance by adding 50 seats. Strike that, 69 seats to a four-seat restaurant. Okay? That's one of my further points, but that's number six or seven. I'm still on number two here, then please bear with me. I want to talk a little bit about off-street parking. Prior to the conveyance to Mr. Debona, the prior owner owned a parking lot that was down the street. Now, there's no provision in the lease that I saw. There's nothing in the record of the licensing board that I've seen between the current owner and Cagnes. Going back years, the property was owned by L. Paul Merini, who was a well-known attorney in Quincy and owned it for years. And there's reference to parking being used at that time. But again, we've got the 2011 parking requirements in the zoning ordinance that now cover these new lots that were created. And I want to just quote from Section 5.1.2 of the current zoning ordinance that was adopted six months before these lots were created. And it talks about off-street parking. And of course, the parking requirement is one parking space for every four seats. So when we're talking about 169 seats, we're talking 42, 43, 44 parking spaces. And section, in the zoning ordinance, Section 5.1.2, ownership or control, off-street parking facilities shall be under the same ownership or control as the building or buildings for which they serve, where a certificate of occupancy has been issued conditional on the maintenance of off-street parking facilities. Such certificate of occupancy shall lapse in the event of a sale or conveyance of the land used for such parking facilities for the required parking. Some Paragraph 1, in the case of control, in parentheses, not ownership, the applicant shall demonstrate that control is conclusive for the period of intended use. Now, there's no parking available for Cagnes, for The Poor House, for the apartment that's upstairs. This building with 169 seats, 40-plus parking spaces required. And this was a lot, again, that was created after the adoption of this ordinance. So these lot, this lot was created when this was the requirement. The old requirement talked about 300 feet and, you know, you could use somebody else's land and so forth. Here, the land has to have control of the parking. They have to control it throughout the ownership of the intended use. And I suggested to Mr. Duca in the letter, the liquor licenses are renewed every year. They should have to come in every year and show this is where our parking is. And I don't think it's good enough to say, "Oh, well, you know, they can park on the street. They can park on somebody's parking lot after the business closes. They can go over here, they can go over there. They can go in the Little Peach as long as they don't get towed." You know, they don't have parking. It's a requirement of the zoning ordinance, one parking space for each four seats. And again, we've just had an expansion of the license. We've had the expansion of the license on this property, an additional 20-plus seats with the new restaurant. The patio at Cagnes has now been transferred to The Poor Yard. But, you know, since last December, there have been 70, or a total of 73, but 69 increase of seats licensed with no parking. It's required. And again, my client lives directly, is in the director of butter of this, the restaurants and this patio where, you know, 50 people are going to be out there every night in the summer drinking, five feet away from the window with the family upstairs. So it is a real burden. You know, again, Cagnes is 98 seats. Had the 50 seats on the patio in The Quincy Cafe. That was a total of 152 seats. Now, with the licensing board action of a couple of weeks ago, Cagnes, 98 seats, The Poor Yard, 23 seats, 50 seats on the patio, that's 171 seats. That's 43 parking spaces plus the whatever's required for the upstairs, 1.75 for the apartment. So you round the fractions up, and you've got, you know, you've got 45, 46 cars parked in the area with no parking. The next issue that I raised is that the bar is located in the side yard setbacks, open space. You know, this patio had been the side yard. There's a 15-yard setback requirement in the zoning ordinance. And this is a congested area. And I understand it that my client, whose house was built in the 1920s, prior to the adoption of subdivision control law, he has a very short distance between his building and the lot line. But when the bar is operating outside, outdoors, right up to the lot line. Let me just back up a little bit. The open space, the definition of open space in the side yard setback of 15 feet, yard is defined as the open area in the front, side, and rear of a building. And by allowing the bar to operate in that setback requirement that's supposed to be open space, we, in effect, we have a license board that's granting variances. And it's this board's responsibility to make sure that the zoning ordinance is complied with. And it's not, I believe it's not. So I think that for that reason, this board needs to instruct the Director of Inspeccial Services to take enforcement action. Now, the fifth issue that I raised was the sign. On the back of the, on the back of the back wall of the patio, there was a big sign placed, and it said, "Welcome to The Courtyard at Cagnes." That sign's come down, the frame's still up. I assume the sign's being redone to say something about The Poor Yard. But I don't think there's any question that this is a sign. The definition of sign in the zoning ordinance, it's extremely broad, and it includes "A message designed to be seen from outside a building and visible from a public way, which is used to direct public attention to and/or indicate the presence of any product, service, or activity whose purpose is to convey a commercial or a non-commercial message." Now, you've got this big sign that's at least 12 feet long and six or eight feet high. It says, "Welcome to The Courtyard at Cagnes," or whatever it's going to say with the new Poor Yard. And it's got, you know, pictures of, you know, whatever. And we do have pictures that we can submit to the board. Mr. Shinet will, has some photographs that I think would be very illustrative. But I don't think there's any question that this is a sign. Now, if it's connected, and we haven't climbed over the fence and gone in and examined how the sign is put up. But I raised this with Mr. Duca, and Mr. Duca says, "Well, it's no violation." If it's a freestanding sign, meaning it's connected to his own property, Mr. Debona's property, then it's a freestanding sign under the ordinance. And that requires one set of approvals. If it's connected to the building and back, somebody else's property, which is what I believe it is, that's a presta, that's an off-premise sign. It's connected to a property owned by somebody else. And an off-premise sign, this board doesn't even have any jurisdiction of. Off-premise signs under the Commonwealth of Massachusetts are regulated by a state agency called the Outdoor Advertising Board. And you have to get a permit. This is, this is in effect, it would be a billboard. And this board wouldn't even have jurisdiction to allow if it's connected to the building and back. But it's certainly not connected to the side of the building. And there's never been any permit issued for it. You know, I don't know how Mr. Duca could say there's no violation. Anybody that puts up a sign in the City of Quincy has to get a permit from the building department. No permit was issued, but yet Mr. Duca says there's no violation. So I really don't understand that. Maybe, maybe somebody can explain it to me. But I think, I think it's incumbent upon this board to make sure that the zoning is complied with, whatever type of sign it is. And again, I don't know whether it's a freestanding sign, an off-premise sign. I don't believe it's a building sign that's connected to the building, you know.
Mr. McCruchy, hold on one second. Did you also just say that the sign's not there for me?
The signs were taken down. The framework is still there.
And that's our sign, it's a framework. So you asked us to take down?
Okay, so you took it down because it's no longer, well, let me, let me put it this way, too. The sign ordinance says if it relates to a business that's no longer conducted, it's supposed to come down within 30 days. Now, it was Cagnes, and the license board transferred it from Cagnes to The Poor House, which hasn't even opened yet. So under the ordinance, he's required to take it down. But Mr. Duca says it's not even a sign, you know. But if the sign goes back up, which I expect it is.
Then it's something else.
Okay. So I'm going to have to go and start over again with a letter to Mr., you know. The question is, we'll have photographs of the sign. You can decide whether it's a sign. And if it's a sign, the ordinance should be, and if the frame is still standing, and if the frame is connected to the building behind, then it's an off-premise sign. And again, it's, that's up to the Outdoor Advertising Board. But it's a violation of zoning. It's not allowed. Well, it's done. The next issue is that this is a mixed-use building. We have commercial and residential. Mixed-use building requires a permit from the zoning board of appeals. And again, I talked about the 14,000-square-foot minimum for residential uses in a Business B zone. This is a 6,000-foot lot. But again, it's residential and commercial. It's a mixed-use building, clearly in the table uses. It says BA, Board of Appeals. You haven't heard it yet, and it was created, and this building was, you know, on a lot that was created five years ago. Never come to the board for any pool. The last point that I certainly would like to make is that the, when the patio was built, it filled in and took away whatever parking there was for this building. This was a driveway that went in. They had a dumpster in there. They had, you know, they had deliveries in there. People could park their cars there. Not a lot of spaces, but it was some spaces. Maybe it wasn't lined off, but this area to park on the property has been taken away. So they've made it more non-conforming by taking those parking spaces away. You know, maybe those, maybe those were only enough spaces for the apartment, to meet the apartment requirements upstairs. But still, you know, that was parking. It's been taken away. This property has become more non-conforming through those actions. And the zoning board should take some action on that. That pretty much completes my presentation. And Mr. Shinet, who is a landlord, and he does have a mixed-use building, and it is pre-existing non-conforming. It was built prior to, and has been used continuously for both commercial and residential uses since before the subdivision control laws were operating in Quincy. He has tenants upstairs, and he can talk, and he'd like to talk about the impact that this 50-seat bar room, three feet from his tenants' windows, directly below, it's as close as this pith wall here, you know, the bedroom window of a 13-year-old boy who is attending school and has to put up with swinging lights and, you know, the noise of a bar right outside his window. And if Mr. Shinet starts losing tenants and isn't able to build the apartment, he's going to have certainly substantial financial losses. So, you know, he would like to talk a little bit about the impact that it has on his. But I have spoken about the legal issues. If anybody asks questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
I've interrupted you a couple of times.
Oh, yes. No questions. No questions. Great, well, thank you.
Thank you. Just give me your name and address for the letter.
I'm sure. Paul Shinet. And I address 1485 Leona Road, 202, 206 Washington Street. Thank you. Some of these pictures will kind of define what Mr. McCruchy just spoke about. Some of them, some of my pictures are here. This first picture defines my building. It's a tree. And if you notice, there's a driveway beside it. The window on the top is a living room window. The window on the bottom is a bedroom window. And there's other windows that really are viewable on this way. With this, if you look to the site, you'll find a little better. This is the driveway, this picture, that was filled in to build this patio. And you'll see that there's a dumpster also there, which has been removed. This picture is the sign that he was referring to. It was up all winter. And I might add that that sign, the lights will lit good part of the winter, infringing upon my tenants.
You said the same picture?
No, that's my place page inviting everybody to a BFF.
Oh.
But this, this actually is probably very similar. This was one of his experiences he had at the site. So you can see the, the sign is across a building owned by Republic Plumbing Supply. The original plan shows a dumpster. This was what was filed. And it shows half that area being used for the courtyard. And that's not the case, if you take a look at it. As you can see by this one, it shows his tenants' parking. That's his tenant's parking he had, by the way, which has been removed. This is the first night that he was allowed to operate the establishment. They got a special permission. And when I arrived, that's what my tenants were seeing. That's the lights, that's the view from my porch, which, if you look at that fence, there's a gutter there. That's how far that fence is from the gutter. And below, there's a trench that's six inches from my wall. And I asked him when he was started this. He never told me that he was putting in the patio. He was putting 50 seats. He was going to redo the driveway. So the, this will give you sort of an altitude of how much was filled in. And that's a before picture, before they filled it in. And then there's an after picture right here, showing the same view. And that shows the second means rigorous, probably, when you're from there. I hope I'm not going too fast. If you have any questions at all, please feel free. This isn't something I do every day. And there's the coffee shop that was converted to, that's being converted to The Poor Yard.
Does it have four seats?
Four seats in one case. And before, that was a coffee shop, I might add. That was never a restaurant. And that was only a couple of years ago. That was a check cashing place in a place where they sent money back home to the children. And there's a frontal view of the restaurant, which shows Cagnes, and shows the coffee shop in between. And it shows how it's not contiguous with that, the original patio. If there's any questions on those pictures, I'd be happy to. If you'd like to do, but. But my story is, I've owned that building. I've been in business for 41 years in City. So I've bought another company that was 49 years old. So we've got 90 years in this city. Marina Salinas lives on the first floor. Christopher Lozinski lives on the second floor. And Dodi Kaka and his 13-year-old son also live on the second floor. That's less than five feet away from this proposed patio for 49 people. These residents have to get up, go to work, go to school most days. These residents have to get up, go to work, go to school most days. They try not to open the spot till 11 o'clock. The outside bar is sandwiched between three buildings, reverberating the noise. The lights, when it's windy, are swaying back and forth. It's a constant light show in the apartments and outside their windows. Penetrates the windows. The lights were left on, as I mentioned previously, a good part of the winter, which gave him an unpermitted light of sun. I rely on this building for my income. I'm retired. And I don't want to lose any valuable tenants. I have great tenants and they're going to come by. I don't want to lose them. So my question to you people is, why would the city law, Mr. Devana's, read to have such a negative effect on my tenants, myself, and surrounding neighbors? I understand they have a right to a quiet and safe environment. Is there any questions I could answer?
Anybody?
No, not right now, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Does anyone else want to speak? Well, I can't wait to this. Favor? Mr. Duca? In favor of?
I'd like to speak, Mr. Chairman. I don't know if maybe the applicant's attorney may want to.
Well, I want to say if anyone was in favor of this, anyone was in favor of this action, come up and speak.
Supporting the appeal.
What is the action? Supporting the appeal. If anyone wants to speak in support of the appeal, thank you. Please come up and speak, once, twice, three times.
Wait a minute, I'm, I'm.
I do have a, I do have a letter from one of the candidates who, I'm confused on what you're saying, huh? Support of?
Mr. Chenet, what's that?
Of, of you guys like granting the parking lot to stop. I was at that license board meeting, I don't understand it either. I think for a restaurant to open up, you do need four, you know, for every four seats you're supposed to have parked. And I don't understand how, you know, you guys should.
Hang on, hang on. What we've asked for is anyone who is supporting Mr. Chenet's appeal of the refusal of the Inspeccial Services to issue orders based upon this argument, speak now.
I'm just giving, I'm, what is, what if his appeal is, is heard? If you guys accept his appeal?
Get the other side next.
Right, but I mean, I'm, I'm just, I mean, I just feel that, I don't even know how to speak on this, it's confusing. Okay. I want to throw in my two cents, but I'm not sure what you're asking for.
Come at the end. Yeah, you're, you're looking for the other side.
Okay.
Anybody who wants to speak, I'm sorry. This, yeah, anyone who wants to speak in favor now or opposed to the application by Mr. Chenet.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My, my name is Everett Fleming. I'm here on behalf of Mark Devana and Devana Realty LLC. There's a lot of information being thrown out there, being thrown out to the public and being thrown out to the board. And I think we need to simplify this a little bit before we really understand what's being requested. This, as Mr., as, as Mr. Chenet's attorney indicated, and as Mr. Chenet himself indicated, is really about a patio. It's about a patio that the licensing board approved. A patio that Mr. Chenet and the folks that are here tonight.
The licensorizing board approved.
Approved. They, there was a public hearing, there was a full hearing, at which time they had an opportunity to be heard. And they're not pleased with what the licensing board decided. So now what they're doing is they are seeking leverage by filing an appeal to this board, raising not only an argument to, to ask this board to deny the patio expansion, but also to deny everything that operates from this building and has operated from this building since 1924. It's important to understand the history. What, what you didn't hear is really the history about this property. I thought that there would be a little bit more information about the title to the property going back to 1918. Because that's really when this property was, was, it needs to be discussed and reviewed. In 1918, there was actually a plan, there's a plan on record at the land court that is, that shows that these buildings actually existed on the site back in 1918. These two buildings that are being occupied and discussed tonight, the building at 210 Washington Street and the building at 214 Washington Street, but that's occupied by Cagney's and the new courtyard restaurant. Back in 1918, and going back 50 years, there was a restaurant that operated from the facility at 214 Washington Street. There was a, a separate business, several businesses that operated it from 210 Washington Street. And there was an independent and separate business that operated from 8 Raymond Street, which is the third parcel of land. At all times, from 1924 until present, there were three distinct businesses being operated from those facilities. And at no point in time was, was there any parking. There was no parking for any of those facilities back in 1924, 1918, when these buildings were officially constructed. And nor was there, was there parking at any time during the operation of the restaurant for 50 years at, at the 214 Washington Street, or during Mr. Devana's operation of Cagney's since 1990. Mr. Devana's been there since 1990 in operating this restaurant. So it's important to understand a little bit of the history here. Because what is being asked of this board is essentially to shut them down, to shut all of the operations and all of the uses of this property down and indicate that they're somehow now in violation of the zoning rights. It's not simply concentrating on the patio, which is the real contentious issue here. So what I would ask that this board do is really focus on the patio. And has there been appropriate hearings held that gave the public and Mr. Chenet an opportunity to be heard regarding the patio, which was an expansion of the existing restaurant use? And I would suggest that not only did they have one hearing, but they had two public hearings on this. One, when the, when the patio was constructed for the purpose and use of Cagney's. And then second, when the use of the patio was being converted and transferred to the new restaurant. Because that's the only issue that's really before this, this board. And they're, they're, they're clouding the issue by raising these other, other, other matters. It's my contention that there's no existing violation. All of these businesses that operated from, from this facility or from these facilities for years, without parking. And the argument that now all of a sudden that parking is needed, even though it never existed before, is just, is not accurate. And it's, it's not fair to, to present that argument at this stage. So let's, let's focus on the patio. Since I've been involved, which is just briefly, within the last week or so, I reached out to Mr. Chenet's attorney and I asked about whether or not there would be an opportunity to sit down with them to talk about ways in which we can mitigate the concerns that Mr. Chenet had. We talked about the idea of doing, installing additional fencing by, by deafening certain noise from the area, by, by eliminating certain music from the venue at, at times of night. And we were willing to sit down and talk to see if we could come up with some resolution. And the answer that I got was, well, we're not, we're not really interested to do that right now. They wanted to move forward with the hearing before you. So my, my request, I guess, of this board is that we have an opportunity to sit down with Mr. Chenet and his attorney and have that conversation. These matters are not resolved best before bodies of boards. They're, they're best to be resolved by the parties through negotiation and discussion. What I found interesting tonight, and Mr. Devana was quite upset by the comment that Mr. Chenet made, was that he was unaware of Mr. Devana's intention to do this. Because Mr. Devana told me earlier tonight that he had had a conversation with Mr. Chenet prior to constructing the patio. And indicated to him at that time of exactly what his intentions were. And Mr. Chenet had indicated to him that he did not see a problem with that. And it was only until after that complaints were raised. So I would, you know, to, to, to now try to use this body and to use this zoning as leverage now, again, because they, they lost in their argument before the licensing board. It's really not fair to any, anybody that has to go through this process. Yeah, I understand. Mr. Devana had been operating since 1991. He's made substantial improvements to his property as he's been there. The city is quite happy. I know Council of the Forest is here to speak in favor of the, the business that he's operated from that facility for years. He's been a good corporate citizen and giving back to the community. And what he's doing by the creation of this patio is, is he's trying to live by exactly what the city has requested of a lot of its businesses. As we see in the downtown, the goal of the, of the city was to encourage outside dining in areas where they could. To expand the sidewalks so that businesses could, could expand their restaurants onto the sidewalk, to encourage outside dining. We did it a number of years ago with the Fowler House Restaurant, just recently, Rosafa, which is the old Alba lunch facility, now has outside dining. All in close proximity to, to residential properties, but also located within a Business B zoning district. And the focus should be what the, what the zoning is of, the underlying zoning is of this particular property. And that's Business B. This was, this, this area is intended for business use. And, and, and the outside dining restaurant concept is really just following what the city's requests have been, to expand these facilities and encourage outside dining. So that's what Mr. Devana has done. It's, so it's really disappointing that, that I, that I, even a commercial tenant himself, Mr. Chenet, who's occupied this building as a commercial use, is now trying to prevent another commercial user to utilize his Business B property in the fashion that, that really was, it was intended for. So I can go through each and every line item on, on, on Mr. Chenet's argument. What I'd like to highlight is, you know, he references the A&R plan, saying that the A&R plan somehow changed the whole picture. And that it all of a sudden extinguished all the non-conforming rights that existed on the site. But again, what I'd like to highlight is that each of these, each of these properties were noted as separate properties. They were always identified as separate properties by the city of Quincy, as 210 Washington Street, 214 Washington Street, and 8 Raymond Street. Furthermore, all of these properties were, were operated independently of each of, of the other. Meaning, there wasn't one entity, one business, that occupied all three of these parcels. They were always operated as separate and distinct businesses. From 1950 until, until 1990, Brittany's Restaurant occupied 214 Washington Street, independent of the Chinese food restaurant and the convenience store that occupied 210 Washington Street. And independent of the business that occupied 8 Raymond Street in the rear. So the A&R subdivision, or division of the, of the site, didn't change anything. Everything remained the same. It didn't eliminate any parking that previously existed. It didn't expand or change the uses of the properties that were existing at the time. It didn't create any additional impact on the community. And interestingly enough, even after the 2012 division of the land and Mr. Devana's acquiring title to the property, he did not hear one complaint from Mr. Chenet or any other neighbors about the ongoing operation of his business. So it's not until the creation of a patio that this is all comes to play. And I would suggest, again, that there's been adequate public hearing on this matter, that the parties have had an opportunity to be fully heard. They were, I, I would say, there was, there was a very clear indication from the licensing board that they were not quite pleased with the, with the, with the, with the level of opposition that was expressed against Mr. Devana's efforts to expand and improve his restaurant. And mind you, not only did he create a patio, but remember, that area of land was a driveway that serviced a dumpster. So what would happen on a regular basis is that a trash truck would drive on that area. Not open space, not pristine green spaces, as is suggested, but it was a driveway that serviced a dumpster in the rear. That dumpster has been removed. The trash is now being dealt with in a different fashion. It will not have any, so the trash and grease and other waste will not have any impact on that, on that, those residential neighbors that exist today. So my suggestion is that not only is patio following the intent and the wishes of the city, but it's also cleaning and beautifying an area that, that, that was in need of some change. And as you drive by that, and you probably had a chance to drive by that, I would suggest that you would clearly see that that's an improved area. So we're disappointed that, that, that you've chosen this venue to now somehow, you know, use this as leverage to prevent Mr. Devana from doing some improvements to his property. But I think it's inappropriate for him to do so. So, thank you.